One sec. Okay, we're live.
Okay, great, thank you. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the North Borough Select Board Interview Subcommittee Meeting for Thursday, January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. This meeting is being recorded. This open meeting of the North Borough Select Board Interview Subcommittee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the North Borough Select Board Interview Subcommittee are allowed to participate remotely. The Act allows North Borough Select Board Interview Subcommittee to meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using Posted Agenda unless noted otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the recordings of this meeting may do so by going to North Borough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed in the Agenda. Ensuring public access does not require public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. And now I'll go ahead and confirm the the members who are here, myself, Mike Teigen. Laura, if you could respond in the affirmative?
I'm here.
And Angie, as staff on the call, could you just respond in the affirmative?
I'm here.
Okay, great. All right, I think that's all like the mandatory homework. I guess we can bring Amanda and Michelle on.
Great, we're joining now.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, everyone.
Hi there, Amanda.
Hello.
Hi, great. Okay, yep, so we're gonna be talking about a position on the on the Library Board of Trustees. Think maybe a good way to kind of just roll into it, Michelle, if you don't mind, maybe just giving kind of a brief overview of, you know, what that what that position entails. And then Amanda, you can, you know, introduce yourself and then we'll we'll roll with with just a few questions, if that works.
Sure.
Works for me.
Great.
So the library trustees, the responsibilities are to govern the library. We help establish policies, organize the administration, determine operations, and authorize expenditure of funds. And I think of us as a sounding board more for the library director and for the staff. We have meetings on the second Tuesday of the month at seven P M. Except August, we have no meeting in August. There are nine trustees on the board. Four of the trustees are officers. And there are three standing subcommittees, so each member of the board will be assigned to one of the three subcommittees. The officers are the Chair, the Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer. And the subcommittees are the Administrative, the Long Range Planning, and the Building and Grounds. And they act sort of as a first stop for, like, it's a, it would be three members of the board and the library director, and they work on a specific aspect of library business. If there are new policies or procedures or things that have to be brought before the full board, they're the first stop to do the draft, and then they present things to the board as a whole. And that's really library trustee in a nutshell.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, Amanda, if you don't mind, maybe just introducing yourself and...
Sure, I'm Amanda Derozier-Mallette. I grew up here in town, moved away for a number of years, but I'm back raising my two kids here. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. I guess, Michelle, I'll defer to you first if you had some questions for Amanda, or if not, you know, Laura and I can can ask a couple.
I don't have any questions. As Amanda indicated, I've known her for quite some time. And when we had the opening on the board, I was trying to think about what the board might lack in representation. And at this point, we don't have anyone on the board who has younger children. And I thought that that was a, you know, I should look for a candidate that might help represent that population of the town. And so Amanda came to mind, and I reached out because every time I see her, we talk about the library and what the kids are reading. So that's it. I really don't have questions for Amanda, but I just wanted to sort of toss out to you why she was a candidate who popped into my mind.
It's funny, Michelle, when you said that, I thought you were gonna talk about all of her experience with the Historical Society as one of the things that you needed at the library, because she's been so involved already. But yes, I think having young children is also a great asset, Amanda, so thank you for being so passionate about the library.
Yeah, definitely.
And I really appreciate you stepping forward, you know, to find another area to contribute to town. And Mike, I didn't need to cut you off, but if you wanted to talk a little bit about what it is that really drew you to this, in addition to what Michelle said, and what you're looking forward to doing as a member of the Library Trustees Committee?
I'm sure. I just, I have very good memories just from growing up here, going to the library. Just want to make sure that that, you know, stays, that we we keep, you know, growing the library and getting it and keep keep it as good as it is. And just kind of being a part of a part of that just sounded like something I really wanted to do.
Awesome. Are there any specific, you know, things in your in your background, in your toolbox, that you think will really help drive some of those, you know, ways to help and continue to bolster the library for our town?
Um, I don't think so, not off the top of my head. I don't I don't have a lot of experience as far as like what the trustees are gonna do. But I definitely think that, yeah, me having the younger kids, and as you said, the the experience with the Historic District Commission, too, I think it'll be good, kind of pull in another aspect of things.
Well, and I like that flexibility that you're looking to, you know, get in and learn and figure out where you can really serve. I think that flexibility on the committee would be good. But having those, you know, and especially representing, you know, what's a desire for young children, I love that as well. And Mike, I didn't mean to cut you off before, I'm sorry.
No, no, I mean, you you basically got to the to the questions I would I would ask, so you know, I don't I don't have any additional questions. So Laura, I don't know if you have anything more, or Michelle, or Amanda, any any other any other parting comments, but I'm I'm all set.
No, I don't think so. I mean, do you, if you have any other questions about what you can expect with the trustees, anything else? Do you anticipate any challenges in this? Sorry, I said, no challenges.
That's okay. No, I mean, I don't think so, like, maybe a little bit just with my current life, trying to juggle it a little bit, but I don't think, I don't think I should see, I don't think there should be too many, too many issues.
Well, I think it's great that you've got a relationship with Michelle, too, who can also help, you know, as you navigate that space. And and we do appreciate all the the library enables for the town, so thank you. Yeah, no, I'm like, I really didn't have any additional questions either. I appreciate all the thought that you've put into this application. And if you have any other questions for us, you're welcome to let us know, or certainly follow up via email afterwards.
Okay, sounds good.
And then what we'll do is, so we'll go ahead and and conduct two more interviews on our agenda tonight. And then after that, we'll go ahead and sort of have our deliberations, sounds a lot more more than it than it turns out to be. But so you could always, you know, view that, you know, as as a member of the public, and then we make our recommendation, we then bring that to the to the greater Select Board for for the final vote and of appointment. Just to kind of give you an idea of what that what that process looks like.
Okay, and I think you do that at the next Select Board, the regularly scheduled Select Board meeting, right?
You got it.
Correct.
Excellent. Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much, Amanda. Thank you so much, Michelle. It's great to see you both. I, Mike, I wanted to say thank you before you say bye.
Great. Well, thank you for having us.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Amanda. Have a nice night.
You too.
Okay, I've got Judy and Erica, so this is for Youth Commission. Erica Ziger will be representing the Youth Commission, so I'll let them both in.
Thank you. Hi, Judy.
Hi, Erica. Hi, Judy.
Good to see you both.
Good to see you both.
There we go.
There we are. Now we can hear you, Judy.
Thank you.
All right, great. Yeah, no, thank you both for for making time to 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 jump on our meeting, and and we'll talk about the Youth Commission. What I was gonna say is to kind of to to get the ball rolling. Erica, if you didn't mind, just kind of maybe give an a brief overview of the of the spot on the commission and kind of what that entails. And then Erica, if you, or excuse me, if then Judy, you wanted to just introduce yourself, and then we'll roll with some questions from myself, Laura, and Erica, if she has them.
Perfect, perfect. Can you hang on one second? I just want to shut this door so the light isn't glaring.
Sure.
It'll help us. All right. Hi, Judy, thank you.
Hi, Erica. Thanks for taking the time.
Absolutely. So the Youth Commission, I have been on it for maybe a year and a half now to two years, and it's evolving. I'm not sure if you had heard, you know, if you heard at town meeting, they voted to combine Youth and Family Services and the Health Department. So while they were combining the Youth Commission, we kind of took a break, and we hadn't met. However, we did meet last month, and we're gonna be meeting typically, it's monthly. I think it's the third Tuesday at seven P M., and it's a hybrid meeting. That that can change the time, the dates and the times while we're, you know, getting new members and stuff like that. But ultimately, the goal of the Youth Commission is to work with the Health and Family Services, also Encompass, which is the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Drug Abuse Awareness Program. And I look at it as being twofold. One is to get a get a really good handle on what the kids need right now. Whether it's emotion, social emotional support, whether it's programming. There's a new outreach coordinator at the for the town, and see what the Youth Commission can do to, one, figure out what what the the families need, what the youth need in terms of support. And then on the support side, see what type of programming that we can come up with that is, you know, gonna meet the needs of a really large base. From, you know, zero to eighteen, and then their families. So what we're looking for is someone that is interested, and obviously interested in that clientele, that age group, and going to be able to, you know, bring a lot of energy and like oomph to the committee, because it's fluid and we have, we're new, you know, we really are trying to get this running again after it had been, you know, it had been kind of stale for about a year or so. So hopefully, that kind of explains it.
Yes, absolutely. And I let's see, Liz Nolan had actually reached out to me recently. I know Liz very well. She's incredibly involved in our community, and I hold her to the highest regard. So when she reached out to me as the new outreach committer, outreach coordinator for the H H, what's I, the H H A, I, H H, H H S, sorry, so many acronyms. She reached out to me as the almost twenty-year chapter leader of the Neighbor Brigade. A role that I have held and have been helping families here in town and in Southborough who have, you know, fallen upon, you know, a crisis situation. And under my purview, I have a hundred, about a hundred volunteers here in town who are ready, fully vetted and quarried to, you know, to assist the family in in any way, you know, it might be just be providing meals. So very sadly, I was notified in the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-four that the Neighbor Brigade, which is a nonprofit five oh one three C charitable organization, was closing its doors. And it was out of my control. So and these are chapters, we were up to like thirty chapters throughout the country, throughout the state, and a couple of New England states. So I had to break that news to Liz, because, you know, naturally, you know, our efforts would coincide. And I said, she, so she very wow, wisely, I can't think of the word. She said, oh, good, well, that's gonna free you up some time to do some of some other things, okay? So and she knows me, you know, and, you know, so we so we laughed, and I said, absolutely, where do you need me? And she said, have, you know, we could, you know, we're trying to reinvent the wheel on the Youth Commission. I said, I love it. While my while my children, we've been in town since two thousand and three, my children are adults now, they came through the school system. My daughter is still in town, she has four children. So not only do I have a personal vested interest in supporting our youth, I think, I I know that my my willingness to, you know, support youth groups and, you know, financially, or, you know, just lending hours or whatever, that has been part of who I am for the twenty-one years since, twenty-two years since I've been in town. So, you know, I read about the Youth Commission, I went back through some, you know, trying to find some meeting minutes, Erica, and I did the the most recent ones I could find were from about a year ago. So I was, I'm excited to hear that you did meet. You said, you know, recently, this this month?
January, so.
Good. So it's, I'm excited. I'd love to be a part of this group. You know, I mean, Liz is going, she's she's already, not surprisingly, such such, so visible in our community in her new role. So this all makes sense, that Youth Commission is being reinvigorated. You know, it's just all about takes a community. And, you know, I don't come in with, you know, any, you know, anything that I can, you know, make happen right away. I know things take time, but anything I can do as an individual to, you know, bring to the table and you know, help help the the well-being of any of our youth and beyond, you know, that's really what I stand for as a person. So, you know, if we kind of are, you know, building this from the ground up, that's okay, you know, it's it it's just, there's a, there's a lot of new things. You know, coming, it's January, it's a new year, and and get these things going, and and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
That sounds great. I know, you know, one of the things that we're looking for is, you know, ideas. You know, what can we do, you know, to kind of get, you know, the volunteers, there's so many of them, and they're so wonderful, and they do want to help. So it's great to hear that you have this network already in place. And then it sounds as if you have, it sounds as if you're gonna have ideas on how to help us create the programming and then get it to the community, especially those, you know, younger parents, the younger parents, and then those that might not be connected to the North Borough Public Schools, because we do have a great relationship with the district, but it's those kids that might not be in North Borough, or also that, you know, there's a lot of information, and sometimes as parents, you you know how it is, you just don't get it all. So I always say, send it to me three, four times, I don't mind. So it sounds as if you have a niche for getting the word out as well, and I think that's gonna be important.
I don't know if I have a niche, Erica. I just know a lot of people, I've been here a long time. I do a lot of different things for, you know, personal, you know, for pleasure, business and everything. And like I said, I have no expectations other than there, you know, there's, if if it's anything that, any small contribution can better the life of somebody else, and hopefully many, many. I, you know, I'm open to brainstorming. I've done tons and tons and tons of fundraising. And, you know, I I I honestly, I I feel really bad for children right now. And 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 I feel bad for us as their parents and for any adults, any teachers. The kids know more than we do. And and I and I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of things, when I say they, you know, with social media and things like that, I just feel like we as the adults, you know, we we've got to get in front of this in whatever that looks like. So if it's, you know, emotional support or whatever, I don't think there's ever enough that can be done. I know, you know, there's a shortage of mental health practitioners. I am not certified in any, you know, any mental health field. But I also, you know, I, if we can do things at a volunteer level that can supplement what the the, you know, the the certified practitioners can do.
Yep.
They need us. And it's just, again, I I don't know what this is gonna look like, but it sounds like every, you know, we're open for ideas.
I have to say, Judy, I was gonna comment, I'm so sorry to hear about the Neighbor Brigade Brigade, because I know that I've reached out several times for help, and I appreciate all that you've done. And I recognize how hard that must have been for you, and it it means so much that you're looking to redirect your efforts to help us with a really critical part of our community. And I appreciate that you recognize how vulnerable that group is and their unique needs. And I I mean, so I just, I I hate, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to comment, because I I couldn't imagine a better place for you than supporting this important work. And I think you've got some really neat experience in your background that can really help us cultivate that group and work with Erica and the team.
Thank you, Laura. I appreciate you saying that, yeah.
How old are your grandchildren?
Pardon me?
How old are your grandchildren?
One will be nine in March, and then I, what is a three-year-old, a two-year-old, and one, the baby will be one in February this month. Yeah, yeah, so my daughter was raised here. She's working very hard to raise her children here, because she loves our community. It's not easy. And, you know, I assure you that, you know, my efforts, my intentions are, sure, family first, but even before my daughter started a family, I never left our school, you know, the even in my kids were adults, I never stopped supporting our schools. I do that through, you know, sponsorships of our teams. I know that when Suzie was fighting for all-day kindergarten, she had my support, not knowing that my daughter would start a family here that we may benefit, she may benefit from. So really, I love our community. I love, I I love our our community members and of all ages. And, you know, I just, I just, I like to let people know that, you know, if there's, if there's anything I can do to support the effort, I'm there.
Great, yeah, great. And I I think that it's going to be a interesting and fun year, you know, come up with different programs and giving it a shot and seeing what works and what doesn't. So I think it'll be great.
Yeah, and Judy, as you could tell your daughter, I I feel her pain as a as a father of four, so I I certainly understand how crazy and and certainly have skin in the game, you know, to have somebody and like yourself, who, you know, the the passion that you have for this just, you know, immediately comes through, which is which is great. And, you know, somebody like yourself, you know, you where you have a, you know, a passion and expertise for, right, next up is, we're gonna talk about Master Plan Implementation Committee. And you wouldn't think, right, Youth Commission and Master Plan, right, it would be sort of a, you know, maybe have that overlap, but it's but it's great how, you know, that that passion, you know, comes through, and and you have that expertise for 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 a wide range of things. And as the liaison for the Youth Commission, you know, I think it's important to have people who 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 want to be there and want to do good. And, you know, I I think that 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 comes through from from the conversation we're having, so.
Thank you very much, Mike, for saying that. I don't know if there's, if I have any level of expertise, but I'm a mother, and I care, I care deeply about our children and our community. And so passion, that that's there.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I don't have any, you know, follow-up questions. I think we had a a good conversation there kicked off by the questions from from Erica. So Laura, I don't know if you had any follow-up questions for for Judy?
No, no, this was great. Erica, thanks for giving such a thorough overview about your committee and just and however, we can continue to support you on the board, let us know, especially as you're, you know, redefining what the work is gonna look like.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Yeah. And Judy, I don't know if you have any other questions for 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 us or Erica?
If I am selected to join the committee, I would just, you know, like to know, like, you know, where from here. So, you know, I expected somebody would reach out to me and say, let's chat, and and, you know, what direction, you know, what are our short-term goals, our long-term goals, and and everything like that. So that would, that would be my only question. But at this point, I just hope, I I hope that you'll have me, because I'm, I am super excited to help to help out.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, you know, that's great. Yeah, what we'll do is, we'll run through, right, the interview after this of of yourself for the for the Master Plan Implementation. And then after that, Laura and I deliberate, discuss, and then come up with a recommendation to bring to the to the larger Select Board for then an official vote on appointment to the to the to the to the committees. So you can certainly feel free to to watch our deliberations and and our next, I should know when our next meeting is, but I think our next, we should have a Select Board meeting before the next Youth Commission meeting, which I think the Youth Commission is on the twenty-eighth.
It's actually, let me look, because it's, we're not having it on February vacation.
The next Select Board meeting is Monday, the tenth of February.
So the Youth Commission is either the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh. I have to, I'll get back to you.
Okay, so either way, we could
Yeah.
Just, yeah, either way, our our meeting is beforehand, so could be an official member by that point, assuming you have the votes, but no. But yeah, no, yeah, thank you, Judy, the, you know, for 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 moving, you know, putting yourself out there for for the Youth Commission. And thank you, Erica, for, you know, for for kicking us off and and give it a great overview and starting a great conversation, so.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Good. Thanks, Erica.
Yeah, so I will, I will figure out how to get myself out of here. Have a great night.
All right, thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Judy. And I I'll bring in Rick from All right, thanks, Judy. And I, I'll bring in Rick from Master Plan and we'll, we'll perform that one moment.
There he is.
Hi, Rick.
Hey, Rick, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Oh, we got you loud and clear. All right, thanks for, thanks for coming on, Rick. So, yeah, and Judy, you're, you're sticking around for, for this portion, portion of the show.
I'll stick around.
You're applying for everything tonight.
Yeah. Um, so Rick, if, if you don't mind, uh, kind of the, the, the order we've been going in, if you could just give like a brief overview of, um, the, the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And then, uh, Judy, you could, you know, obviously we've had a pretty good conversation before. If you, you, you could say something if, if you'd like after, you know, specific to Master Plan. And then we'll roll with some questions from, uh, myself, Laura and Rick.
Okay, uh, so basically, um, the town did a new master plan in two thousand twenty. And one of the things that Master Plan recommended was that a committee be set up to basically kind of watch over the master plan, keep track of its status of the recommendations and goals. And just make sure that it didn't end up sitting on a shelf someplace collecting dust. And so on the heels of implementing the master plan and accepting it, the, uh, Select Board appointed a Master Plan Implementation Committee whose job was to basically review the plan and recommend what, uh, goals in the plan, uh, the town should take action on and sort of direct that information to the, the proper authorities. So some things might be a Select Board responsibility, some might be a Planning Board responsibility, some might be a DPW responsibility things like that. So the committee was formed, it was late in two thousand twenty, early in two thousand twenty-one. And, um, basically, the biggest thing that came out of the master plan was kind of a revisiting of the downtown area that a lot of the residents who attended the public information sessions sort of fed back to the consultants that they thought that the biggest thing the town ought to do was consider how to make the town center more attractive and bring in better businesses, uh, make it more walkable, expand parking. And so although the master plan got into a lot of different areas of things the town ought to look at going forward, the overwhelming majority of residents figured, uh, the input was that the most important thing the town ought to do was look to revitalize and renovate the downtown. So when our committee first formed and we read over the plan again and read over where the emphasis was, we decided um, to recommend to the Select Board um, that we seriously consider what to do in the downtown. And the master plan recommended that a separate study be done specifically for the downtown. And so the Select Board agreed to fund, um, a master, a downtown master plan study. And the discussion then became kind of was gonna have to be another committee set up to sort of manage that study. Could it be a subcommittee of the MPIC, MPIC basically standing for Master Plan Implementation Committee. And pretty much everybody in the MPIC wanted to be involved in sort of shepherding through the downtown revitalization plan. And so although it really wasn't our charge to be in charge of any particular project, it just made sense as opposed to setting up another committee that the MPIC would work with the town to hire the consultants and sort of shepherd that plan through. And so, uh, we did that. And that became the hundred percent focus of the MPIC until the, uh, until the, um, downtown master plan was completed, um, near the end of two thousand twenty-three. And basically in two thousand twenty-four, working with a town planner, we've been kind of looking for opportunities to then implement some of the recommendations in the downtown master plan. The first one being, we're looking at Blake Street and how Blake Street could be redesigned to be sort of a gateway into a new downtown. And there is now money that's been allocated to look at revisiting Blake Street. So that's kind of what we've been doing. But basically, our goal is to just look at the master plan in general and see what else needs to be done. And so recently, we sort of stepped away from the downtown just revisiting the blasted plan and, um, we just send a memo to the Planning Board looking at some of the housing recommendations of the master plan, one of which was to do a new housing production plan in the town. And we just recently sent a letter to the Planning Board asking them to consider maybe a new housing production plan for the town of Northborough. So we're kind of moving out of being the downtown management group into more, again, our, our real role, which is to sort of look over the master plan and recommend what needs to be done. So that's kind of a long-winded explanation.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick, for the, uh, for the detailed, I'll, I'll call it detailed explanation. Judy, did you, did you have any questions, um, a- about the role or, or, um, any questions for, for Rick or, or myself or Laura about what Rick discussed?
No, no, I don't have any questions. Um, in preparation for today, I did, um, pull out, the, uh, you know, read through the master plan again and I, I took some notes and I, you know, I, I, you know, I went back through all the meeting minutes and, um, it's, uh, Rick just really, you know, summed up what, what I've been, you know, reading in the recent meeting minutes. And I commend the MPIC for what they have knocked off their original goals so far. Um, I know that, you know, the MPIC and the town as a whole has a lot of work to do. We have a lot of projects. Um, but, um, you know, a, a lot of the things I, I saw in some of the, one of the meeting minutes that, I don't know if it was Rick, but somebody had recommended that we go back, the group go back to the, um, the master plan and, you know, do exactly what I was just summarizing, you know, what, what goals have we accomplished and what do we have left to do? Um, so, um, I was excited. I, I know that the downtown is, um, is always uh, a, a hot topic in town, um, and, you know, nothing's gonna be solved right away. It's a, it's a process. Um, I know housing is an issue. Um, I brought that up in my, you know, my Youth Commission interview that, you know, my daughter, I said she would very much like to stay in town. Um, and, uh, you know, she's, she's making it work. She doesn't wanna have to leave. Uh, but I'm a real estate agent. I know that housing is, is where we have a housing, housing shortage and what is, what there is, it's very expensive. So, um, all of the goals of the MP, of, of the master plan, um, I, as a resident and, and as just as an interested person, um, I support all these goals. And again, I do commend uh, the town on what has been accomplished so far. Um, and I'm just here to say, um, I, if there's a vacancy on this particular committee, I, you know, I'd love to, you know, come in and see, uh, you know, healthy collaboration, that's all. You know, I don't have anything spectacular that I can say I can bring to the table to make it all to, you know, cast a, cast my, um, you know, shake a wand or anything, but, um, you know, just like vote, you know, every vote counts, every, you know, every person that comes to the table, um, might be able to make a difference. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been a huge advocate because I've been follow, I had been following Marlborough and Hudson for years with their EDC. Um, so, um, I'm very excited that Northborough is talking a lot of economic development and everything. And, um, there's a lot more to do, um, and, uh, you know, I just, um, if, if I can help in any way, that's why I submit my, my application for this particular committee.
Right, great. Yeah, I mean, and, and looking over, you know, the application and, and, and everything that you submitted. You know, I, I think your, your experience on the, the Town Hall feasibility study committee, you know, parlay is ve- very well, I think, with, with, uh, with something like this. I don't know if you, any, anything specific from that that you think would, um, sort of, uh, carry over or, or things that you've learned or, or anything like that?
Oh, I'm sorry to cut you off, Mike.
No, no, sorry, I'm, I'm just rambling, go ahead.
Absolutely. And, you know, I, I, I really enjoyed, um, being on that committee. I learned so much about the four buildings that the town, and the four buildings that were, um, that the town owned that were, presented as possible options for the town hall. It's, um, it got me thinking, you know, it got me thinking about, you know, I know that, you know, Ally needs a place for her recreation, you know, I mean, there's just, there's, there's so many moving parts here and there's, we have so many beautiful properties and so much land. Um, that it's just, um, you know, um, I'd love, you know, if I, if I could look ahead twenty years, hopefully not that long. How's it all gonna come together? Um, it's, um, so, you know, I learned a lot about the buildings in town and, um, just, uh, in working, you know, working with fellow residents and just, you know, brilliant people who have, you know, we all share the same, um, the same vision for our town. We all have the same mission. We just, um, we just wanna, you know, make great decisions for our town and for our prosperity. So, um, that, so, you know, the, um, I guess, I don't know if I, that answered your question. Committee, I, again, really just, just about the buildings, um, and, um, it's, it, it, it's, it's exciting to me to be, just be, you know, rather than, you know, be, be watching or he- hearing about, you know, somebody else's version of how the meeting went, I felt like I was part of the process and that was incredibly rewarding to me.
All right, that, that's, that's, that's great. Thank you. Um, Laura, I don't know if you had any, uh, additional questions for Judy?
I think she answered them all. But thank you for the very, very comprehensive responses. Thank you for your interest in serving and all that you've done and continue to do. I really appreciate it.
It's all my pleasure, Laura. Thank you for saying so.
I guess I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
So basically, is there a particular area of the master plan, things you saw in it or anything that you come to the committee? Something you feel you wanna advocate for right off the bat, or is it more of a learning experience, or what do you bring to the table about the existing master plan?
Uh, that's a great question, Rick. Um, there's nothing specific that I personally want to advocate for. Um, I did kind of allude to the fact that I'm all about, you know, building on economic development because build it and they will come. Um, and I think, uh, you know, put the infrastructure in place that encourages positive business, um, supports the businesses that are here. Um, that in and of itself is going to, make everybody, um, happier to, to live, to stay in town, to come to town. You know, cer- certainly anything that can help with, um, you know, our, our tax base, um, our quality of life. So, um, again, only because I was mesmerized watching Hudson and Marlborough for years. Um, and I would go to those meetings and, and I, I saw what, you know, I, I, years ago I saw the vision. And, and it happened. And I know it can happen here in Northborough. So I'm like, you know, um, the traject- trajectory that our town is on in right now is so in- incredibly exciting to me. And needs to be all hands on deck. And if it's done in a congenial way of, you know, healthy collaboration, it will happen. And all of, all of the goals in the master plan will, will be attained.
Great, thanks.
Right, um.
Did that answer your question, Rick?
It did.
I thought it was a great question. Thank you for sharing that.
It was a great question. The, and, and, and also, Rick, I don't know if you know, I also am interviewing for the Youth Commission. Um, and I know that that's, you know, that's always an inherent, you know, um, you know, it's, it's, you know, supporting our children and, and supporting our, our seniors too. It's just, um, I love that, you know, no, there's not, there's age, age is just a number in town here. Everybody is, is supported. Um, but it takes the whole community to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
And again, I'm seeing, you know, we, there's been so much accomplished recently and, um, it's just, it's, it's just so, so endearing to me to see how our, our, our own community supports. We're, we're self-generated, self, um, supporting. And you don't see that. I don't see that, especially as a real estate agent. I don't see that in many communities.
All right, great. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I thank you, Judy, uh, I, uh, you know, for sticking around for two interviews. So, so, uh, so thank you and, and answering some, um, some, some good questions. And Rick, yeah, thanks for, for coming on, giving a, a good overview. And, uh, you know, uh, and, and, uh, helping us, uh, talk to Judy about the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I think we're, I think we're, uh, I think we're good to move on to our next step of deliberations. Uh, unless, uh, Judy or Rick, you guys have anything else to share or Laura?
Do not?
All right.
Do you need to stay involved for that? Is there something that gives you and Laura do?
Uh, good question. So, yeah, it'll just be Laura and I. Um, so we'll, you can continue to, to watch. It's obviously a, a public meeting. Um, but, uh, but, yeah, it'll just be Laura and myself, um, having a hard, hard discussions.
Okay, good.
I just, and I, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. Thanks for giving the overview about the committee. Judy, thank you so much for, for your interest in serving the town. Rick, thank you as well for all you continue to do for the town and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight.
Thanks, Laura. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for applying, Judy. Appreciate it.
All right, you all set? Do you want me to hop off, guys, or, um?
Yeah, we're all set. Yeah, thank you, Judy so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for coordinating this, Angie. What would we do without her?
Yes, seriously.
All right, thanks, guys. Let me know if you have any questions.
Bye, Judy. Thanks.
Same thing, I guess I'll, uh, sign off also, but if there's anything else you need out of me, just have Angie text me. I can get back on or send me an email or something.
Sounds good, Rick. Thanks.
Any problem with Judy being on the committee?
Thank you very much. And Angie, yeah, thank you for all you did to coordinate this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, all for doing it. All right, I'll let you guys deliberate, but I'll be right here if you need anything.
Sounds good. Thank you, Angie. Um, yeah, so, I mean, I don't have any issues with, uh, Amanda for, for, uh, Library Board of Trustees or Judy for either Youth Commission or, or Master Plan. Um, you know, I think Amanda, and you, you, you mentioned it, you know, having that, um, you know, diversity of, of, of perspective and, and having somebody with kids who use the library, right, would be, would be great to have on the, on the Board of Trustees um, that you had mentioned before, so. Yeah, I don't know if you have any, yeah, so for, for all three, I think I'm, I'm more than comfortable giving a vote of confidence to go to our board with it, so I don't.
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate it. I took some notes while we were going through this and just that we've got some information to bring back when we do communicate with the full board, but so I'll just run through the three people and we can, you know, interject or, you know, or supplement. But, um, with Amanda, I had a couple of thoughts. Number one, she's been with the library since, you know, she was young. And she's seen this evolution of all the new programs, the new things that are available in addition to what we had as kids, and now she's able to share that with her children. And I think that gives her a good perspective of the type of services that we like to offer in the library. I also, again, the Historical Society finding ways that we can collaborate between these different groups. And she'll be able to bring that information to the trustees. And it's just another bridge between, between groups. So I, I definitely agree. I thought Michelle, you know, having an existing relationship with her will help, you know, guide her into the committee, the commission and help facilitate that process. Um, did you have anything else to add on, on Amanda from that regard or?
Uh, no, no, I mean, I think you laid out her, uh, I, I think you laid out the case for, uh, for Amanda on the Board of Trustees for the library, so.
I have to do this and have like the actual words ready. Otherwise, you're gonna get to the meeting on Monday and it'll just be like, here we go. Um, Judy, so Judy has been involved in town for so long. I'm talking about her Youth Commission, um, her Youth Commission application. And this one in particular, I didn't realize that there was a Neighborhood Brigade and that that had, had, is no longer available. And I know that that's been an important resource for a lot of people in town. And even if I was looking to help other people, Judy knows this really broad range. So whatever is needed, she's a go-to person to help, you know, get a solution, whether it is Whether it is a crutch, a wheelchair, or a meal. I've called her for a lot of different things. And I love that she's both got children that will benefit from this work, but she's also got passion, creativity and energy. And I couldn't imagine a better board for her to work with. And I think being with Erica to help, you know, build the direction, it's just going to be really awesome. And she's got an existing relationship with folks in the HHS, uh, department already. So she'll understand what she's got to work with. And then she's also got really creative ways to help um, find and fund those, those, um, experience, those opportunities. So that, that was what really came to mind from a Youth Commission for her application.
All right, yeah, and then, yeah, I mean, as far as the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I mean, I think, um, on top of all the other positives that I think carry over for whether it's Youth Commission or, or Master Plan, um, you know, I, I think her having that experience, you know, and I, and I saw it, I watched those meetings, I attended some, you know, ask questions and, and whatnot at some of those meetings. Um, you know, I, I, I think that is almost sort of like an automatic sort of, um, you know, easy, uh, not transition, but, but right, it, it, you know, the buildings they were looking at and what they were trying to to find feasibility for was, uh, you know, was part of Master Plan Implementation, was part of downtown, um, and even, you know, I, I like the idea of Master Plan, looking beyond the downtown and, and looking more broadly at the town overall. Um, so I think somebody like herself with, with those specific, um, experiences, qualities and passion, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, she's, uh, you know, again, uh, perfect for, for both of those two groups that are, you know, you wouldn't think have overlap, but like you said before, you know, it's important that we don't have silos, right, between our different boards and committees, and we have overlap.
Yeah.
As liaisons, right, we're, we're trying to do some of that as best we can, but I think having talented people who can do, um, and wear more than one hat is important. And I think having, you know, somebody talented like Judy, um, and Amanda on different committees is, is, is just a, a positive for the town, so.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, randomly, you know, the other one thing I forgot to check, there's not an overlap between MPIC meetings and, um, Youth Commission meetings. That's the only other thing I think we need to check to make sure that they are not going to overlap, but otherwise I think we've got enough to, to go back and make our recommendations to the rest of the board.
Yeah, um, and I think, uh, what we do, Angie, um, we just need to make a motion and then we do take a vote, if I'm remembering correctly, in these meetings. Um, so can, obviously, I, uh, either one of us can make a motion, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, um, so I and, and Angie, what's, just because I'm, I'm blanking, what, what's kind of the general language for the motion? Just a, a motion to recommend um, Amanda DeRozan Millet to the, uh, Board of, uh, Library Board of Trustees.
Perfect, yeah, yeah.
Second.
All right, motion made by myself, seconded by Laura. Uh, we'll go ahead and do a, a, a voice vote, uh, Laura?
Aye.
All right, and I am aye as well, so, there you go. Um, and then we'll do, uh, a, another motion, uh, uh, so I'll, I'll make a motion to um, recommend Judy Boyle, um, as a member of the Youth Commission.
So moved.
Okay, um, and then we'll voice vote, um, Laura?
Aye, yes.
All right, and myself, aye. Um, so, great for, for Judy on Youth Commission and then um, for, uh, I'll also, uh, make a motion for Judy to be recommended, uh, as a member of the Master Plan, uh, Judy Boyle, as a, as the master, excuse me. I will make a motion to recommend Judy Boyle, uh, to be a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
So moved.
So moved, there we go. All right, um, Laura?
Yeah, aye, oh my gosh.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm getting tongue-tied after a full day of work and then, and then rolling with this, so, um.
You did a great job. I appreciate how you, how you pulled this together.
But, uh, but yeah, no, and, and thanks, Angie, again, um, you know, for hurting the cats that are the select board members and trying to work out schedules and stuff.
You guys have a lot on your plate. I appreciate everything you guys do and all the volunteers, it's amazing. We're a very lucky town, so.
Yeah, yeah, and having, having great staff as the glue keeping everything together is key, so.
Well, that's great. Well, thank you so much, you guys. Have a good night.
All right, do we have to make a motion to adjourn? Okay, yeah, I should know that. So moved, all right. And then Laura?
Aye.
I, I vote aye, so thank you. We are adjourned at six fourteen PM.